The Human Services Committee to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Snell, Commissioner Williams. Any questions with respect to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And now, public comment. Public comment is now open for a three-minute period. Three minutes per person, I should say. It'll be open for as long as we need to have it, three minutes per person. Any public comment? Last call for public comment. Public comment is now closed. We now move to committee items. Item four, a minutes of last month's meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes. Thank you, Commissioner Snell. And Commissioner Williams, thank you. Any questions with respect to the minutes? All those in favor of adopting the minutes will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And now, the DHHS quarterly report. Thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Stickitowitz, and I am the Foster Care Program Manager at MDHHS. Jackie Carafino is our director, but she's out of the office today, so asked me to cover. I believe you all should have gotten her report. Okay. So, just to review a few things that she wanted to cover in regards to the childcare fund update. So, we are on track to spend all of our 2024-2025 budget, and we will do that without exceeding expenses. So, that's good to report. A few events that we've been—
Remind us what that goes to pay for.
Pardon?
Remind us what that goes to pay for.
So, we—any youth that comes into foster care, we have to see what their funding is. It's based on many criteria, and so, most of them are what we call 4E-funded, but some may be county-funded. And so, we could use that—
Just tell us what it pays for.
Yep, it pays for the cost of care for youth in foster care, or could pay for a child that might be in a residential facility. I know that's something that's been discussed—
So, it's not like—this is not like childcare for somebody who goes to work. This is childcare for folks that are in our care.
Yep, it's a foster youth in a foster home, so the foster parent would get paid out of the childcare.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. A few events to highlight over the last quarter. We partner with Cascades Baptist Church, and they do an amazing back-to-school backpack program for us. I think I picked up about 75 backpacks filled with school supplies for all of our youth in foster care, and so, we're able to provide that and really enjoy partnering with them. And then, we also, in August, hold a foster parent support event, and we provide some of those backpacks, and then, just a back-to-school event with some events and a food truck and those events for our foster parents. This past weekend, on the 13th, we held our yearly fall conference, and that is for foster parents. It's a training. This year, it was six hours of training regarding trauma, foster care 101, and had a foster parent come and present about the lens of empathy. We had about 20 foster parents on Saturday, and we provide childcare for any youth that they bring for that, and also provide lunch and refreshments. September is also infant safe sleep in the state of Michigan, and so, we listed some safe sleep steps that can help prevent sleep-related deaths. A Michigan baby does die every two to three days due to sleep-related causes. We see that a few times a year here in Jackson. So, if you need any more information about safe sleep, you can go to the Michigan.gov website, and they have information on that. Our community meetings are listed there. Just to highlight a couple, Ms. Carafino does attend the HSCA General Monthly Meeting. She's also on the My Place Governance Committee and works closely with My Place, and attends the Network Council Meeting. And then, some DHHS meetings that are listed there. Just to highlight a few of those, we attend the—she attends the Managing the Workforce of the Future Manager, and then, myself and our CPS Program Manager do many mandated reporter trainings throughout the year, and so, we do quite a bit of those with schools, starting back to lots of schools. Jackie's also on the Recovery Task Force Quarterly Meeting. That's about it. Anyone has any other questions?
Questions for the DHHS? Thank you for your interaction with the number of organizations around town, notably Lifeways.
Yes.
So, thank you for that. Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams. Thank you. Did I say Baer? Oh, Snell and Baer, beg your pardon. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, the medical care facility. Madam Director, I see is here. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. Okay. So, to get started, we're just going to cover the financials today. So, we have July's financials. Revenue for July was behind budget by $43,883. Expenses were over budget by $217,868,000. This is mainly attributed to a number of anniversaries in July and August, which resulted in additional payouts of sick time and vacation time accruals, which is allotted at the anniversary year, along with some additional overtime. Our net position for the month of July, we were behind budget by $261,751. Census was nearly at budget, at just under one— one bed day behind budget. We had 54 admissions and 42 discharges in the month of July. A lot of this was working on some census build after a little bit of census decline in early July. Year-to-date, revenue is behind budget by $406,313. Expenses are over budget by $457,276. Change in net position is behind budget by $863,589. Census is behind budget for the year of 1.48 bed days per month, with a total number of admissions of 351 and discharges 341. Now, just as a reminder, we do have an increase coming in our Medicaid rate. That will offset this change in net position. We're expecting to see those rate letters coming out sometime around October 1st to begin October 1st. So, that will help through the last quarter of the year to offset the negative change in net position we currently have. On page—I'm sorry, slide six? Five? Five. We do have the census trend line here, and you'll notice through July, we did start to trend up above the budgeted census. We did have a drop-off at the end of July, and now, we're trending back up above that again. Our strategy through the rest of the year is not to focus on budgeted census, but to focus on the maximum census that we can maintain at any time. So, our goal is to try and stay as full as possible through the end of the year to help offset the losses earlier in the year. And then, on the next slide, our accounts receivable days out is down to 49 days, which is under our goal of 54 days. Our cash on hand right now is estimated at 37 days. And again, this does not include the amount that's been earmarked for repayment for Medicaid funds. The amount left to repay is 1.31 million. The additional funds for the other half of that have been paid back, so we're not expecting that amount to be due until sometime next year. For our MOE usage, we do have an MOE resolution that was passed by our board that I believe is part of your packet requesting MOE usage of $76,559.38 to cover the bond interest payment. This is a common request for us to cover the November bond interest payment. With that, is there any questions?
Questions for the medical care facility? As far as the resolution, Mike, the resolution for MOE, was that something we passed in August and didn't get it through the full board because we didn't have a quorum last month? Is that—do I recall that properly?
Yeah. If it was on Tuesday night, it'll be on next week.
Okay. I guess I'd like to just make sure that that's the case if you're expecting to see action on it.
Was it on the Tuesday night of August?
No, I wasn't made aware of where it was placed on the agenda. Usually, we just provide it to—
At August.
—to this committee, and then, it moves forward. So, I'm not sure the process from there.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. With respect to the—okay, so with respect to the budget, the under-budget is kind of alarming. Now, what I think I hear you saying is—and alarming even though we're close to our budgeted census. What I hear you saying, though, is you expect revenues to increase significantly then in the last quarter.
Yes.
It seems to me expenses have also been over budget. It's just—we can't continue, you know, 1.3 million a year declines in your fund balance. It's just not—that's going to be a problem. So, I hope at this month's meeting, you'll pass along our concern, our expectation, that we hope revenues will recover in the last quarter of the year so that the decline in fund balance is not as alarming as it appears it might be.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Snell, Commissioner Williams. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes. I'm told that that resolution usually comes forward in October. That's when we usually bring it.
In October, okay.
Yes, this is the work.
All right. So, it's come through your board. It'll come to us in October. At this committee, I suppose, next month.
Yeah, that's what I'm told.
Very good. Okay. Just want to make sure it's not, you know, lost in the shuffle somewhere. Okay, thank you. We'll now move to MSU Extension Semiannual Report. I'm going to sneeze if I don't sneeze.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thanks for having me here today. I'm Mary Bowling, the District 12 Director for MSU Extension. I wanted to provide just a short update on some of our programs since my last report back in March. So, first, I wanted to talk about fair. You know, we had our fair several weeks ago, back in July and beginning of August, and everything's up, so that's good news. Animals last year were at 600. This year, we were at 800. Still Projects was 400. That increased by 200 as well. And then, auction buyers were up 100 buyers over last year's auctions. So, we saw good increases. We started some new programming this year utilizing an e-scavenger hunt so that kids and families could get involved throughout the week. And they had—we had 25 active teams participate with over 1,200 submissions throughout the week. So, that went very well. We'll probably continue that, or I can see us continuing that again next year. Our 4H Council hosted their first cookie baking contest at the fair this year. That was, again, very well-received, something we're sure to do again next year. And then, we continue to improve our efficiency with fair entry, using it for auctions, check-in of entries, creating show programs, and more. And I just want to say that our staff has met throughout the year with our fair manager here, the new setup that we have, and that's going very well. The communication is very good between our team and the fair management team, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Next, I wanted to bring your attention to a new publication that our conservation agronomist that's housed here in Jackson County has put together, along with her colleague in Lenoir County. And if you have any constituents that are interested in, you know, coin and corn and soybean diseases, harvest safety, USDA yield forecasts, there's a survey in this most recent update, and they put a lot of information in there about upcoming events. And so, just encourage you to let your constituents know that that's a new resource that's available if they're out there, you know, farming and looking for crop updates. Our ag team has also been busy this summer with farm visits and field days. If you want to stay updated on any of those things or pass along to your constituents, here's a QR code for how to join the mailing list for our ag team. And so, that's a great way to stay updated. Next up, I did want to talk about our SNAP Ed-funded staff members. Unfortunately, it's not good news, it's bad news. Our nutrition staff, in July, Congress passed the Big Beautiful Bill, and that included legislation that was eliminating the federal SNAP Ed program across the United States. So, it's not just impacting Michigan. This is a USDA-funded program, and that program was eliminated. And so, unfortunately, at MSU Extension, we had 94 individuals that their last day will be October 1st. They were responsible for educating low-income families on how to eat more nutritiously on a limited food budget. Some of them also worked with schools, food pantries, domestic shelters, reentry facilities, daycare centers, and other community partners. And so, you may hear from some community partners. You know, you mentioned Lifeways earlier. That's one of the organizations that our staff would regularly work with and provide programming through. And in the six counties that I cover, we're losing 10 individuals, and six of those provide at least part-time support here in Jackson County. So, Jackson County probably is the most impacted county in my district. So, just wanted to make you aware of that. But I did want to let you know, not 100% of our nutrition programs were funded through the SNAP program, so we still do have three staff members in the district. Rebecca Kalkins, who is here in Jackson County and Washtenaw County, and then, we have Allen in Monroe County. And Mary Donaldson is housed in Washtenaw County, but she covers the entire district. And so, we do still have our expanded food and nutrition programming and our Serve Safe programming, cottage food law, preserving food safely, those sorts of things. So, I would encourage you to let me know if you are hearing about any reduced programming and have any concerns in that regard, and that way, I can—I can look at those and see if there's any alternatives that I can identify to that. So, we definitely have still some great staff working in our nutrition program, and—but it's going to be very limited because of that SNAP Ed reduction. So, with that, that's all I had. You can find out more about our programs on our annual report link. It's provided here, and feel free to contact me if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions for MSU Extension? So, with respect to the SNAP funding that was—the federal SNAP funding, that is out. But MSU is not deciding to continue that itself, right? It doesn't—it doesn't do that on its own?
So, the SNAP Ed program actually utilized USDA curriculum. We're no longer able to use that curriculum because that program has been eliminated. So, even if we wanted to carry forward, we would not be able to do it with the same curriculum. And so, we are looking at, you know, what other options might be. But anything going forward, we're going to need to identify funding and curriculum.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Baer, please.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I understand that the SNAP Food Assistance Program is continuing—
Yes.
—as it was.
Yes.
It's just the educators that taught people how to cook, how to improve their diet. Those educators are—you've lost 10 of them.
10 in the District, 94 in the State. Yes. But the SNAP—the SNAP Food Assistance Program does continue. There are some cuts proposed to it in the Big Beautiful Bill. It's not—it's not continuing as it always has. I'm not up to date on what those cuts are, but I know that the education program, those educators, that program was completely eliminated. And I know there's 32 universities across the nation that were partners in that. But also, like Michigan Fitness Foundation here in Michigan, we shared education programs with them, so they've lost their educators as well here in Michigan.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Snell, Commissioner Williams. All in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And now, we're up to the Medical Examiner's Report. Dr. Mano, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before you, you have our summaries for May, June, and July, and I'm primarily looking at July. You'll see a number of numbers there, but the numbers by themselves don't really mean anything, so I'm going to express and explain them in percentages. In May, we investigated 290—as of May for the year, we had investigated 296 cases. As of June, that increased to 340, and as of the end of July, it's 403. We're projecting that by the end of the year, we're going to be probably investigating or having reported to us 690 to 700 cases. For May, we had performed—as of May, we had completed 85 autopsies. As of June, 96, and as of July, 114. Year-to-date, that's what we have. We're projecting that we're going to be approximately 195 autopsies or 200 by the end of the—by the end of the year. October, November, and December are usually our busiest months, so we may see significant increases. And we are performing autopsies on approximately 28% of the deaths that we investigate. We have developed strict criteria—or I have developed strict criteria since I made the decision as to how and when we will perform an autopsy so that we can keep the cost down. If you look at the manner of death, 65% of the deaths that we have investigated are natural. 14% are accident, and we've had one homicide, which comes out to be 1.6%. And at the current time, we have 19% that remain pending. That means they're still under investigation with either pending toxicology and review by the—by the pathologist. When you look at the investigation types of deaths that we've done, we've actually released 81% over the phone. Now, that may seem significantly high, but in the past, we've had complaints from working with law enforcement, with investigations at the scene as to taking such a long time. So, we have worked out with police officers that if they're at all suspicious about the death, our field investigators go to the scene. But most of the time, they report information to the field investigator, and then, they report it to me, and we release the body. If you go down and look at the age groups that we have there—that we investigate, 84% of the deaths that we investigate are over the age of 50. 68% over the age of 60. 49% over the age of 70, and 24% over the age of 80. So, we are primarily dealing with an elderly population, as expected, that end up dying. When you look at deaths that we investigate at home, it comes out to be 38%. And deaths in a healthcare facility, 52%. So, that comes out to be, you know, 90% of, you know, our investigations, which goes along with our natural deaths that are involved. 6% were in custody for those. And we've had 11% of them have been traumatic deaths that have occurred. Going to the last page where we look at the total county ME cases, you can see the numbers there, but what's important are the drug-related deaths. In 1975, when I started med school, in pharmacy, they said, "As long as there is pain and distress, real or not, chemicals and medicines will be abused." And that's one of the things that we have seen throughout my career. The other statement that was made was chemicals that are used as designed are medicines, and those that are used inappropriately become poisons. And that's one of the things that we have seen in, you know, our drug-related deaths. So far, as of 2025, we've had 22 drug-related deaths. 45% of them have been female, 55% have been male. When you look at the age group, though, 95% of the drug deaths so far are over the age of 30. 73% were over the age of 40. 59% were over the age of 50, and 18% were over the age of 60 as drug, you know. And many people think that drug deaths are primarily related to the younger populations, but that's not what the statistics are showing. Then, I'm just going to report about—
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Those—when you say drug-related deaths, are we including illegal drugs as well as prescription drugs? Or, I mean, legal versus—
Well, that's one of the things I was going to look at, the drug toxicology down at the bottom. What we have is—you know, we can't figure out the total. But for 2025, we've had eight deaths that have been related to fentanyl. 9% related to cocaine. 12 of them have been related—the most have been related to prescription drugs that have occurred there. So—and that's why I made the statement earlier about pain or distress, real or psychological. What happens if you eliminate one drug? Humans, you know, since the dawn of man have been abusing substances. They substitute something else that have occurred. And on top of it, when it becomes associated with money and economic, we see more and more of that. One of the things that I wanted to report is that we have a new issue in the Medical Examiner's Office. I know that we submitted our budget, but we've been informed by our pathologists that the autopsy costs are going to increase from $1,200 per case to $1,500 per case. And as a result of that, I've instructed Sarah and our administration—administrative staff to survey other counties and see what the going rate is across. One of the things is that a limited commodity is having forensic pathologists to be able to perform the autopsies. So, to a certain degree, we're kind of held hostage, you know, to what they're going to do. But we're going to try and negotiate and look at what are being—what the costs are across the state from other counties. I know that in the past, when they submitted the 1,200, that the going rate at that time was $1,500. So—and the other thing is, is we've had multiple tours of the morgue and educate people what we do in the Medical Examiner's Office. I have a number of emergency medicine residents that are rotating through the department, and when they rotate, they actually witness an autopsy, and we actually have them go out with our field investigators to the field. And then, at the end—the end of this month, we're going to have our annual education and group discussion conference for all of our field investigators and our staff. And then, as—at the end of the month, I just want to inform you is— um, I will be going to Saudi Arabia to give a, two lectures to the Third International Conference on Mask, Mask Gathering Medicine and Emergency Medicine. Um, I'm a little bit leery about that, but they got my name out of the book that we edited on mask gathering medicine. So that's my report.
Thank you, Doctor. Doc, um, Commissioner Williams had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a quick question, end relation to, um, uh, drug deaths. Is there a way to identify between, um, an accidental death and an overdose? I know essentially those are the same, but I'm just curious if there's markers that would show?
Well, the, the actuality is, um, we classify those as indeterminate because we really don't know. Pardon?
I didn't hear what you said. You classified them as what?
We, we classify it as indeterminate.
Indeter- okay.
Okay, because, you know, is it accidental? Most of the people that are using drugs, okay, um, know the consequences of it, okay? And how did the levels get high? You know, was it intentional? We can't prove that. Um, was it accidental? We can't prove that. It's definitely not natural. Um, and part of the issue is, um, if it's considered an illegal drug, we don't list it as a homicide, but the prosecutors go after it, um, as, you know, drug deliveries as homicide, so it becomes an issue.
So, I'm sorry, so just in terms of prescription drugs, I should have been clear in that, I apologize. So are there markers, or is that still identified the same if it's a prescription drug?
That is totally dependent on the history that we obtain-
Okay.
-and looking at how they've been taking the medication, um, for it. Um, prescription drugs have been abused, um, and we have ways of identifying that. But then, when we go back and review the medical history and the process by which they've taken it, um, one of the things that we do in the office is, you know, I obtain all the medical records that I can, um, from the decei- uh, from the decedent. The, um, primary care, their specialists, and the hospitals. And we review that to come up with the manner and cause of death, because what we try and do is, um, eliminate unnecessary autopsies and toxicologies, um, if we can.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for your que- thank you, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Baer, please.
Thank you. My question was also about the, uh, prescription drugs. They're the highest number of deaths, uh, between all these drugs. So I'd like to know, is it that the, that the patient receiving these drugs, was the drug prescribed to them the wrong drug or the wrong dosage? Or were these prescriptions abused by somebody that the prescription wasn't made out to?
We have no way of knowing that. Um, what ends up happening is that the toxicology is based on the blood that we draw on the patient, and then the reported medic- medication, um, that is reported to us, um, and we just go back and check on that, and the decision is made by the forensic pathologist, but we can't tell. You know, and when we say prescription drugs, does not mean that it's always an opiate. Um, what happens is, we've had people overdose on insulin, um, people have taken inappropriately beta blockers, um, and that's why I said earlier that medication taken as directed, um, or a chemical taken as a directed, it's a medicine. If it's taken inappropriately or in a wrong way, it becomes a poison. And that's every medication that we take, including those over the counter. One of the biggest tox- one of the biggest poisons that are out there that people don't realize, um, is acetaminophen. And if you look at all of the over-the-counter medications, okay, most of the people don't look at the combinations of drugs in there. Um, and, um, when I worked in the emergency department, when people were taking medicines to try and relieve just simple headaches, you know, aches and pains, they were overdosing on acetaminophen and then developing liver failure. So, you know, there's a lot of education that needs to be, um, provided for people taking any type of a substance, you know, whether or not it's regulated or unregulated.
I will tell you that within the past couple of weeks, I took a tour of your office, and Sarah was very gracious and thorough, and I appreciate her, uh, her work, and, and, I think she impressed upon me the fact that you and your staff are in ministry to the decedents and to their families, and, uh, we appreciate that, um, that approach.
Sorry I couldn't be there.
Sarah was fabulous, and I, I really enjoyed and found it very interesting. Uh, Chair, go ahead, Tony.
I don't know if you're the correct person for this question. Opioids, well, we've had the opioid settlement years ago. We're still re- receiving money on these opioid settlements, but doctors are still prescribing opioid pain medicine. Uh, three years ago, or three years ago, I had some surgery, and they gave me a big bottle of opioid medication. I used one pill that first night. After that, I never needed anymore. They, a week ago, doctor even prescribed an opioid medication to a friend's five-year-old child who had a burn on his hand, blisters, second-degree burns. And we're still prescribing opioids to five-year-old children. I don't understand why the medical profession is doing that, if they're already paying settlement money and the billions of dollars for opioid use. And again, I don't know if you're the appropriate person to answer my question.
I'm just going to be very careful and tactful about what I'm about to say. What ends up happening, as I said, pain, whether, whether or not it's real or psychological, okay, is a real issue, okay? And the number that is prescribed by physicians has now significantly come down. Some docs don't, okay, um, limit the amount that they prescribe. We have had prosecutions of offices that became, you know, opiate disp- especially, um, or dispensaries where they came in and were given prescriptions written by doctors. Those doctors have lost their license and have ended up, um, going to jail or even to prison. I can tell you that now, like in the state of Michigan, for you to get your, and renew your license, you have to go through an opiate training, um, and, um, education program, um, talking about the issues and problems with, um, opiates. Margie, being a nurse, um, in the past remembers that in the emergency department, they did the pain score and everything, and if we did not prescribe during that time period opiates to relieve patients' pain and discomfort, it was considered that the hospital and the medical staff was not doing their job. That's what led to the opiate issues and the opiate settlements from it. Um, there's a lot of issues, but what ends up happening is, yes, children can be prescribed opiates, okay? There are varying doses based on their weight, um, and based on the degree and the type of injury. A fracture, a child having a fracture, they're not going to be just given Tylenol and Ibuprofen. Um, they're going to have real pain and discomfort, so they may be given codeine, they may be given an elixir of, um, you know, um, hydrocodone. There are ways in which, but that's based on the education and the clinical decision made by the physician and evaluating and knowing what his, um, what the patient is. Um, and we can't be cavalier or reckless in our prescribing, um, you know, actions.
Thank you for that education, appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Doctor, and we, we will entertain a motion to receive the medical examiner's report. Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams. All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. And now the Department on Aging. How's it going today?
Hello. Danielle Paquette was not able to attend today, so she asked that I attend in her place. My name is Leslie Krantz, and I'm the deputy director at the Department on Aging. We have several educational programs going on at the Department on Aging. Today, we are hosting a fall prevention, which is organized by Wellwise Services. The individuals, um, that participate today will receive information about how to prevent a fall, what to do if they fall, and learn about community resources. On September twenty-third, that, we're holding our senior safety seminar. American One Credit Union Fraud Fighters will be coming to discuss scams occurring in our community, um, which citizens should be aware of. And then the following day, we're having rapid shred, or vital shred, excuse me, it was rapid shred last year, it's now vital shred, come, um, to, uh, do shredding for, uh, seniors to get rid of their personal documents in a safe and secure manner. Um, we are also holding a Diabetes Path workshop, starting October second, going through November sixth. Martha York from Wellwise Services will be discussing ways individuals who live with diabetes can improve their health. Uh, this class will be held in, in the day, later in the day, which may provide an opportunity for those who work or are caregiver of an older adult to attend. We also completed our annual exercise survey with our participants. Uh, just to highlight a few things that we learned, uh, sixty-five percent of the, uh, participants come regularly. Ninety-three percent stated that they feel that the exercise classes help them live active and independent lives. Uh, one of the comments on the survey says, "Love this class, always leave happy." That's a good thing. Um, other interesting details from the survey, two-hundred-and-twenty-one individuals have participated in a class this grant year. The eldest participant was ninety-three. The average participant age is seventy-three, and eighty percent of the participants are females. We do those surveys annually. Um, community support, on September eighteenth, that's this Thursday, a, a work group from Eaton Company will be coming to pack over six-hundred emergency meals for our Meals on Wheels program, um, as we gear up for our fall distribution. Kitchen equipment, we are replacing a reach-in refrigeration unit. The unit, the old unit was purchased in two thousand and nine. Um, the useful life is twelve years, so we've exceeded that. We contacted Co-Pro and received pricing and went to the lowest bid, which was Stanford Smith, and the purchase price is seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. And that concludes the report for the Department on Aging.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Questions for the Department on Aging? I see the shred event on the twenty-fourth.
Fourth, yes.
Yeah, and thanks for sending the flyer along with it. I'll try to put it up on social media and suggest that to folks. Uh, it's the sort of thing where, if you put it in front of somebody, they'll think about it and decide, "Okay, yes, I can."
They don't even have to get out of their car.
Well, um, but people always have stuff that they sh- that they could get rid of and shouldn't just throw in the trash. So they, it's got personal stuff on it. So thank you for doing that, and thanks to American One for, um, underwriting it.
Yes. Well, actually, it's a grant through Wellwise Services. It's an elder abuse grant that we received that helps with the funding.
More excellent partners that we have to do these sorts of things.
Yes.
Uh, Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. And Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams, uh, all those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for filling in today. Don't ever be, don't ever be nervous about being in front of us. We love you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Could you share the flyer with the Commissioners?
Uh, it's in your board packet. It's in, it's part of the board packet attachment.
Yeah, there it is.
Fraud Fighters Shred Day flyer, so download it and-
Perfect.
Sure.
That's the easy part. The hard part is getting it onto my Facebook page somehow. Okay? Thank you, and, uh, hi Kristen, I'm sorry, we're chatting on and on. Uh, the Health Depart- the Health Department's report is next.
No problem. Good afternoon. Um, I have my monthly report on here, similar format, similar information as most years. A couple of things I do want to clarify and just talk about. Due to staffing, our numbers will look a little bit lower in our maternal infant health program. Um, we had the retirement of a staff member, and nurses are very hard for us to recruit just due to the different nature of, you know, um, the work that we do and, and the pay that we give, um, for our nurses. It's, it's very different than bedside nursing, so a lot of nurses go into the, um, into nursing to do bedside and more bedside active patient care, um, and ours is more programmatic as far as, um, the way that works. So, um, just, we keep, we keep on trying to hire nurses, so, uh, you'll, you'll see. Hopefully, those numbers will increase, um, and we'll be back to full capacity in that program soon. All of our, although not reflected in this report, a little bit, um, to note is that all of our, uh, school-based programming will resume or has already resumed, and so that'll be reflected. But, um, so this kind of finalizes kind of the end of things we did over the summer. Hearing and vision information in there on page, I believe it's two, um, has the fiscal year, or, excuse me, the school year, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five in there, and then, um, we've, I also identified, um, you know, all the different outreaches and places that, that our, um, individuals have been in the community, um, trying to provide health, um, and public health information. Just to follow up briefly on, uh, the MSU extension on Mary Bowling's, um, discussion of the SNAP education program, that was an impact that impacted the Health Department. I think I mentioned a couple of months ago that we had stopped. We did receive funding for, um, the Lana program, which was learning, uh, learning, oh, I just had it in my head. But learning about nutrition and activity, and that was a, a program that was, uh, again, a USDA curriculum, um, and we were a, a pass-through through, or there was a pass-through through the state and the Michigan Fitness Foundation, and we were a recipient of that. That has already ended. We were already, um, ended back in May or June where we were not able to do our outreach at the, um, the farmer's market navigation, um, for that. Uh, but that was a small impact to, um, our health education program on there. Personal and preventative health services, uh, we continue to, uh, monitor numbers of communicable diseases and, um, see a treat sexual health, uh, in our community. We have changed some of our, um, hours to focus a little bit more on going out into the community to provide some of these services, so you'll see some of those, um, numbers there might look a little different than they have. We've been, um, out in the community on Mondays, and I believe Wednesdays now, and then our clinic is open Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Immunization numbers, there is a link, I actually think I left it off of here. Normally, I provide a link, uh, to immunization numbers across the state and locally. Uh, that link isn't here, but if you need it, you can look on a past result, it, it updates, but, or a past report, or, um, I can gladly give that to you. Our environmental health program, um, continues on. We're really, um, focused on structuring that department and working on updating our, uh, standard operating procedures and policies down there. It's been a while since some of that has been updated, so we're working with the staff to really make sure that, that, that those, um, procedures and, and policies represent the work that we're doing and meet all of our minimum program requirements, which they ha- they have been, even though they're outdated, um, they have been meeting those minimum program requirements, just need to make sure they reflect the work that we're currently doing. Other thing to note on, um, environmental health is, we have just started, and we have our initial kickoff meeting for our HEDRO project, um, technology and software upgrade. Um, that has been a long time coming for the environmental health department. I'm really excited, and I think many of us are excited to be able to have, um, a little bit more data integrity. We're using a lot of antiquated systems, um, and so, you know, through your approval through this board and our, um, fees that we're collecting, um, from recipients of environmental health programs, we will be able to support that program and, um, make not only our staff thi- things easier for our staff to use, but also, uh, users who need to apply for an applicant or are seeking information. It should be much more, um, from the community and user standpoint, a lot better as well. Um, last thing, I just want to quickly note, um, as you are all aware, and as we go through budgeting, um, for the county, the Health Department follows the state's fiscal year with no state fiscal, or with no state budget passed. We are, um, budgeting as we have in the past and as we expect to receive funding. That can all- That can all change. So, just, just to make a note that I've been in contact with county administration as well as our state and local, state representatives on the local public health side, just to make sure we're staying in the know. And then, we will, you know, make adjustments as, as things happen, should we not be fully funded, so.
Questions for the Health Department? There was, I think Matt has been working or keeping an eye on a building in the Village of Hanover that the Village of Hanover is not very happy with, and making sure that there's a view that someone's living there, and there's no water on, and it's kind of, it's a point of irritation, significant irritation for the village. So, if you guys can kind of stay on top of that, that'd be great. And I haven't heard anything on Arbor Village recently from Senator Schenk's office, who was kind of keeping an eye on it. Have you guys heard anything on that?
I haven't heard anything else. The last, I think, was in June.
I think I will prompt Nancy Smith in Senator Schenk's office to find out what's going on, because I don't know whether the work got done or whether the park is being fined as, it seems to me it was appropriate to do it long, long ago, but Eagle has not so far done that. Okay? So, just a couple of things that rise to my, arise to my notice, yes.
And I was, I have been kept informed of the village, the building condemned or not condemned.
It's been condemned, but of course, the treasurer just recently sold it again. A tax sale, which I suppose she has to do. Another point of irritation for the village, but I'm just keeping an eye on it. The Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And now, to a budget amendment, and Cecilia is here to show that to us.
Yes, this is the budget amendment, year-end budget amendment for the Health Department. Page one shows the different adjustments to the revenue, and then page two shows adjustments to the expenditures. Again, it's something we do every year in order to close out the books, and so, are there any questions?
Commissioner Baer, please.
Thank you, Chairman. In the revenue, can you tell me which of these increases are from grants and which of these increases will come out of general fund or what source they will come out of?
They're not going to come from general fund. So, it kind of, in the account description, it kind of, kind of tells you, like, you know, you have a federal grants, so it'll actually say, and they'll say state grants, so it's in the description as to what the revenue source description is. But none of this is general fund money. It's just program money that the Health Department has.
None of this is general fund money?
No.
Okay, you just said, some of them specifically said federal grant.
Yep.
And when it didn't specifically say grant, I was just wondering, what is the source? But, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Cecilia, am I correct in saying that the reason we're entertaining the budget amendment at this time is because typically this funding is more on a September 30th sort of a year-end to coincide with the state's fiscal year? Is that right?
That is correct. Their year-end is 9/30, the Health Department's.
Right. And so, I mean, we may have budget amendments for general and other funds, but they'll probably be closer to the end of the year as we approach the calendar year-end.
Correct.
Okay?
Yes.
Is that, is that helpful, Tony? Is that helpful to you?
Yes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the budget amendments and recommend them to the full board. Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. We're now up to claims. The Chair will entertain a motion to pay the claims. Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Baer. Any questions? They're down here. I think, Tony, you've seen them, right? You've seen the claims?
Yes, I have.
Very good. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Members, please take, go ahead, Tony.
I signed off, I re, claims for public safety and transportation. I haven't seen yet the claims for human services.
They'll bring it down as soon as they're finished down at this end, okay? As to other minutes, please take note of the VA meeting minutes and the DHHS board minutes that are on your board packet. And the noted, the reporting schedule for October will be Wellwise, and it seems to me we'll also have that MOE item for the medical care facility, too, in October, right, Mike? We'll have the MOE adjustment for October?
Yes.
Yep. We're now up to public comment. Is there public comment? Any public comment? Last call for public comment. Public comment is now closed. Committee member comments?